That's good. All right, we call the meeting to order, salute to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best all with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of members?
Trustee Malinsky.
Here.
Trustee Conner.
Hi.
Trustee Herzak.
Hi.
Mayor McFettrich.
Here.
Spawning to the chime.
Oh, sorry.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
So long.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. If there's no one here, we will dispense with that. We have a few minutes before our public hearing, so I'll just continue. I do not have the report from the code enforcement officer. I'll ask for that and email it to you. My report is... Okay, good evening and welcome to the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees' monthly meeting. What a beautiful summer we have had. Our three summer events were very well attended. Thanks to the group All Without the Base for a wonderful concert in Bill Earl Park on July 27th. And then on August 3rd, our unique event Porch Music was a big hit. Thanks to the Morlock family and the Maymore family for sharing their lovely porches. In addition, the musicians, Ryan Casey, Matt Waager, Rob Gay, Tony Boeris, and Matt Welch, offered their time and talent for free in order to give back to the community. So thank you so much for that. We're very grateful for their generosity. And finally, we had our first theater in the park last night. The Adirondack Regional Theater presented "A Midsummer Night's Dream" to a huge crowd. There were many, many positive comments about the play and the delicious ice cream. Thanks to Stuart Shops for once again supplying that delicious ice cream. The Champlain Committee for America 250 Celebration is hard at work. We have several events already scheduled, including historic marker dedications. We're looking to schedule a concert and a lecture series as well as involvement from the libraries. Volunteers will be needed, so if this is something that interests you, please contact me for details. The Village of Champlain has passed a resolution adopting the Climate Smart Communities pledge. Our next step will be a task force which promotes and supports climate mitigation. If any Village residents are interested in being involved, please reach out to me. I am delighted to announce that the new Champlain Fire Station is nearing completion. There will be a short written cutting ceremony on August 29th at noon and a community grand opening celebration on October 11th at 11:00 a.m. I was fortunate to be able to attend several events this past month representing the village. These include a meeting with Bonnie Black to learn more about suicide prevention, attending a Friends Across the Border Gathering organized by Michael Cashman, and included the mayor of the city of Cornwall. The dedication of Bob Van Park, working with JCEO to help some of our local seniors. I attended a town history meeting and an open house and a tour of the new Crisis Intervention Service in Plattsburgh, which is really an outstanding service. I also, Mary and I also spoke with Ben Arboire via Zoom regarding the possibility of a new website. And I had the pleasure of performing a wedding in the village. May the remainder of the summer be filled with good weather and plenty of time with family and friends. As always, reach out with any concerns and suggestions. I really do want to hear from you. Thank you. Are we close enough?
I think so.
Six thirty-eight.
Okay, may I have a motion to go out of the regular meeting, please? Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and now I need a motion to go into the public hearing.
So long.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so now we are in public hearing regarding the Local Law Number 2-2025. This is the Knox Box Local Law. As there's no one here tonight from the public, we won't, we will not hear those comments, but I just want to briefly summarize it again. It's an ordinance requiring certain structures have a key lock box, Knox Box, installed on the exterior of the structure for fire, EMS, and other safety purposes. This is for commercial or industrial structures that are protected by an automatic alarm system or automatic suppression system, or those that are secured in a manner that restricts access during an emergency. That also includes multifamily residences, government structures, nursing care facilities, and all public and private education facilities. Anyone want to add to that? All right, since there is no one here, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries and a motion to go back into the regular meeting. Is there a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, carries. All right, we are going to further discuss this Knox Box thing later in the project on the agenda. Okay, committee reports. Anything from Water and Sewer? Kim's not here, Chuck, you're the deputy commissioner. Anything on that?
Just that the two projects are coming to a close. Not much left on either of those.
Yeah. Yeah, great progress. Anything else? Streets and sidewalks? Nikki? Anything to add? Equipment and tools? That's Chuck and Joel.
Just been a lot of maintenance on a lot of equipment.
Yeah, we've got quite a few things repaired. Yeah. Buildings and property? Joel?
Still trying to get in touch with Chris. I've been really been extremely proactive in getting in touch with him, but I'm gonna reach out and get information. I just want a roster or like something on paper that has the data so we can look at the registry and see where we stand.
Yeah.
Just kind of assess where we're at and spend, I guess I didn't think last one was a year and a half. So see where we're at, see how this works, if it works in the way that we want, and then replan or...
Yeah, or if there are changes that need to be made.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Parks and Recreation? Nikki?
Want to let me update?
No, no, nothing's really changed.
No.
The Planning Board, I don't believe the Planning Board has been...
There's been no meetings.
There's been no meetings. Zoning Board, there have been no meetings. Champlain Fire District, in my report, I didn't make mention of the new fire station, which is pretty exciting. And on our agenda later is the old fire station, so we'll discuss that later. And Recreation? Nothing really. Okay. All right, thank you. Reports from the trustees. Nikki, you want to start?
Thank you for setting up all of the fun activities this summer. Lots of them. And Stuart, thank you again for the ice cream. It just about all went, so that was nice.
That was popular.
It was.
Especially black raspberry.
Yes.
Very good. Yes. And thank you to Mary for the cooler. Nice big new cooler.
That was, that was a little pommes l'orange from the party.
Yeah.
Party parrots, so we'll thank them.
I mean, it was, it was nicer than last year's.
Yes.
The library had some successful events this summer, a lot of them to do with gardening. The theme was Color Your World, so there was a lot of color painting activities that were included. It went pretty well, so it was nice to see that our library has a summer program back at the building. Our next event, and thank you to Cornell because they did come quite a few times to talk about gardening and our local pollinators and plants for those pollinators. Our next event is October, and that is a month-long library corral. So we're, we kind of shortened the list this year, but it's still including Clinton, Essex, and Franklin libraries. And you can visit any number of libraries you want within the month and get a passport stamped and then enter to win some fun basket gift. And our local author Kate Messner is again agreed to donate some of her books signed, so that is nice. And at the end of the month, we'll have our annual pumpkin decorating contest.
That's always about, yes.
I think we do have a date, so keep an eye on the Facebook page. We'll be sharing that publicly. I don't know which paper it was.
Okay.
I'll get, I'll have the date information at the next meeting. Great, we have plans.
That's fantastic. Thank you. Thanks, thanks for all the work you did on that. Chuck?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Joel?
Same, same.
Okay. I do want, Mary, I do want to thank you for helping set up everything for the Village Fest or, you know, the ice cream and the tent and all that. Next, we have the report from the Clerk Treasure.
Everyone has their expense of our annual reports for July.
What?
What? I forgot, I gotta go to my desk. I have a bill for Barton Le Judas.
Oh, okay. Well, you want to do the, that's, that's the project. Do you want to do the other stuff first?
We can. It's only, it's just one, it's a small bill.
Okay.
But I still have to add it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have additional invoices for the warrant.
Yep.
The additional invoices are $9,613.04 for a total warrant of $30,426.4.
That sodium illuminate, we buy like once a year or something, or...
Yeah.
Yeah, not very often, that's not, not very often. That's what I thought. We have a motion to approve the warrant with the additional invoices.
So long.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any questions? Questions, anything specific you want to know more about?
Just the AUD report.
That's our annual report. We had Tom here the other day. We had an extension due to my surgery, so we don't need to have it filed till the end of September. He's gonna come back because there's a couple of things that we need to redo.
What's, what's, what even is that, AUD report?
It's the annual, annual audit report. So I scroll to SafeCom Controller.
Got you.
Anything else? We feel we need to come back. Did you get settled? Okay, roll call?
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Conner.
Hi.
Trustee Herzak.
Hi.
Mayor McFettrich.
Aye.
We do have one bill for the water replacement. It is for Barton Le Judas for $772.50.
Can we have a motion to approve payment of this bill?
So long.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Any questions about that? We're getting down there. Yep, yep. All right, roll call?
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Conner.
Hi.
Trustee Herzak.
Hi.
Mayor McFettrich.
Aye.
Anything else, will you?
Nope, I knew that bill.
No, that's fine.
I thought about it earlier too.
All right.
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for all your work on that. Report from the superintendent. We have Mike's report here, as well as a couple of other items. Just for the public who may be viewing this, I'll just summarize it a little bit. Hydrant flushing was completed, that's a huge accomplishment. Still working on vault maintenance. They've been mowing and trimming. I think the village has been looking really nice, although all of our grass is getting pretty brown now, lack of rain. Waiting approval on the ash tree removal, but they have, the village crew has been cutting down some trees that had to be removed. Major, major work at the sewer plant. They're working on the digester tanks. So they've completed two of them. This is really labor-intensive and difficult with this heat. Then they assemble the new piping and they bolt it down with stainless hardware. There are six tanks left. At least one of them needs, is going to need a vacuum truck, and they expect this to, this work to continue until sometime in October. A lot of, a lot of things were repaired. The bucket truck, the backhoe, the Kubota, Kubota is at the shop awaiting parts. And there are some other things that are awaiting repair. One thing that Mike brought up here is that last month he had asked for approval for a duct hunter ryer. This is a 300-foot flexible fiberglass rod on a wheel that has a copper core and it's inserted into non-conductive pipes, like sewer lines, conduits. So it allows him to put a current down there as a, as a locator. He has, he does have a one quote for, I think you all got this, right? One?
Yeah.
Okay. So he does have one Jameson duct hunter traceable router new, and he is asking for approval of up to $1,750. So, so want to make a motion so we can discuss this?
So long.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. The one that he had found, I guess, is no longer available. Yeah. And they tend to range between $1,620 to $1,750 plus grade.
Is this something that is used over and over?
Yeah. Yeah. It's going to allow him to more accurately mark out, like sewer lines. That sewer snake that he has only goes three feet. Said that the one here, he would be able to get to 149498 if it's still available. That's why he's asking for the $1,750 because that's the next one. Yeah. That's, that's out there. Right, so we would, it would be up to, and then hopefully he can get the less expensive one.
Right.
Is this from today?
I believe so. Any other comments or questions? Suggestions, anything?
I just think it's something that we need.
Yeah.
So they can find all the...
Like free time?
Yeah. Yeah.
All the lines and whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, roll call? Nikki, yeah.
Hi, Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Conner.
Hi.
Trustee Herzak.
Hi.
Mayor McFettrich.
Hi. And also, someone came to help analyze what's been going on with our radar, our radar signs. The Church Street one works occasionally, the Prospect one hasn't been working for a long time. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, because, hi, he did not talk to me about this, but he can get, it's called a radar head, and it's $250. They're $200, $250 each. The guy who's working with, he would give them, he would give us both of them for $200. Okay. All right. So I feel that the, the traffic control on both of those streets is really needed. I mean, you live on one of them and I live on one of them, and the traffic is well over 30 miles per hour, so this is a good reminder. I think it's pretty important to get these repaired. Anyone want to make a motion to get these, get this?
I'd make a motion.
Okay.
That we get them both for doing the damage?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? You know, I just, I, I just want to say to anyone watching this, we are very well aware of this, this speeding traffic in this village. This is...
On all streets.
On all streets. And we often send letters to the Sheriff's Department, the state troopers, and, you know, they, they respond as they can. I think these radar signs do help. It is a reminder when you're going too fast, so we take this seriously. All right, roll call?
Trustee, uh, Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Conner.
Hi.
Trustee Herzak.
Hi.
Mayor McFettrich.
Hi. Okay, correspondence, there is none. New business. Standard workday resolution for employees. I think everybody got a copy of that.
We had correspondence.
Oh, I don't have anything listed on that.
No.
She didn't list anything on there. No, I didn't. There was three pieces of correspondence.
Oh, can you just name them for us?
Yep. One is correspondence from Gerald Stone to T.J. Piacoc Construction praising the employees. Two is correspondence from Northern Housing with our annual deduction donation. And the second quarter sales tax revenue of $77,867.47 from Twin County Treasure.
How did, how, how does that compare to what we had last year at this time?
Um...
About the same?
It, no, no, we got a little bit more, um, but I believe it was less than $10,000.
Okay.
But, but still, it was up.
Okay. Great.
Any increase is good.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. I think everybody got those, got paid.
I did.
I, I did get...
But I didn't stay here, so I, I thought maybe that was last month.
Well, I was looking, I thought, I'm like, maybe this is last month.
You know, I got them too, but, yeah, I thought maybe this last month and I didn't look at the dates.
That's okay.
Yes. Yes. I, I will, I will add though. Sorry, I keep going off script here, but that letter from Gerald Stone is greatly appreciated. You know, we, I think we had a really good contractor this time for that water project, and I think they worked very, very hard and, you know, did a great job. So thank you, Gerald, for acknowledging that, I really appreciate that. Okay, so back to the standard workday resolution for employees. So everybody else, there's, there's a standard workday resolution for employees. There's also a standard workday and reporting resolution for elected and appointed officials. We should have something on file for this, and I've looked back and we don't, so I figured we should, we should definitely do the employees one, and then elected and appointed officials should be done on a yearly basis. So this is what we're working on. We can go with the workday resolution for employees first. Okay. So let me just read the top part into the record. Be it resolved that the Village of Champlain Location Code, oh gosh, 40154? Yeah. I have my contacts and now I read this. Hereby establishes the following as standard workday for its employees and will report days' work to the New York State and local employees' retirement system based on the timekeeping system or the record of activities maintained and submitted by these members to the clerk of this body. And it, the standard workday is eight hours per day for the Clerk Treasure, the Deputy Clerk, the Superintendent, and the Public Works Maintenance. So we just need to pass this? All right, we have a motion to approve?
So long.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. No, opposed, that motion carries. Do you want to, it's jumping ahead, but do you want to do the other one right now?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, I just have to get to it. All right, so the other one is the standard workday and reporting resolution for elected and appointed officials. Says be it resolved that the Village of Champlain 40154 hereby establishes the following standard workdays for these titles and will report the officials to the New York State and local retirement based on their record of activities. And the two elected officials are Kim Trombley and Nicole Malinsky, and a standard workday is six. Okay, those record of activity results have to be reversed.
Yeah, I was just looking at that.
But Kim is 4.92 and Nikki is 2.25. Okay. I didn't even read those. I redid this the last time, and I did change the record of activities columns. Okay. So, just write that in. So, yeah, so it, so on, on the record, Nikki's, Nicole's record of activities result is 2.25, and Kim Trombley's is 4.92. Okay, and I have a motion to approve?
So long.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Back to new business, purchase of a new computer for the superintendent. Yes. Mike Jocker needs a new computer. Mary, do you want to give any information on this? You've worked on this more than... I, I gave everybody a copy of the email that came from Twin State, who manages the activity on our computer and storage and, you know, all the security that goes on with that as well. And, and he's saying constantly, I'm getting a notification in Mike's, over 90%, and now they're saying seven years old. His computer cannot be updated to Windows 11, which will go active in October, and will not be supported by, by Windows. So he does need to get a new computer. I asked them for a quote on the computer, and they also included the services that come in, transferring things over from Mike's current computer to the new one, everything that is involved with that. So they gave us a quote for those two numbers, that's from Twin State. And they're, they're the ones that would also be managing that as well after that's, that's imposed. Okay, so the, the quote on the Dell Pro Slim desktop is $1,949.48, and for professional services estimated is $814. And we motion to approve these.
Keep wanting to desktop, that's just...
Yeah, yes, yeah. Is there a second?
Sure.
Discussion?
No. There wasn't any other quotes?
I did not get any other quotes. I can, I can do that?
Yeah, I think that's kind...
Yeah, I think that's kind of a hallway.
Well, I know a little bit about computers. And this is probably about a million times better than what he's got.
Oh, at this point, yes.
It'll probably change his life, honestly. Oh, yeah, I mean, probably could get it for cheaper, but it's one of those things where it's like, how long do you wanna be able to use it for? If you get a cheap one, then you might only have a couple of years out of it, whereas-
Well, if, you know, you consider a cheap one, I think you can just get a better price probably for something comfortable.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure you could.
And for the actual service to transfer things over, I think you'd probably get a better deal.
Yeah, I mean, I think-
Through somebody like Staples or whatever.
They've got some sort of support system, like the bottom two lines, onsite service support for twelve months, pro-support, tangible customer service for sixty months. So it sounds like they're, I mean, could be right that you could probably find just the computer system by itself, and then you might be able to skip some of the service fees that they look like they're trying to offer.
I mean, we have to have the professional services, we work with Twin State.
Yeah, I mean-
For, for that bottom part. As far as the desktop, I mean, we can get, we can get a couple of other quotes, I guess.
I mean, it's a down, we can, I can go through down and put in those, all those specs.
Right.
And see what they can, what they can do. You said Staples?
Staples, I've dealt with Staples for everything in October, don't they?
Yeah, we have, we have to do this in September. Because in October, it's longer, it's no longer going to function. But we've got one more meeting, so.
This quote expires on eight twenty-nine, so if I can get some, two more quotes, so in the next couple of weeks, and, and provide those to people if we can hold a special meeting or something.
That'd be really helpful.
On something that's fast.
Thanks, thanks for doing that, Mary. Okay, so we have, we have a motion on the floor, but I, I think we're just going to table it till we get further quotes, and it'll probably hold a special meeting to get this taken care of. Everyone fine with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. America two fifty committee, I, you know, I brought this up in my report, but I just wanted to reinforce that, this is a pretty big deal, you know, twenty twenty-six, the two hundred and fiftieth. And it's not just focusing on the Declaration of Independence and the Revolutionary War, it's really focusing on our history from that point going forward, and the whole concept is the concept of freedom. So, the Town of Champlain, we have some things planned, like dedication of historic markers. But we've been brainstorming some other ideas. We're working with the librarians for recommended readings, maybe having author visits. We're going to be looking into a lecture series, talking about different people that maybe lived here, that influenced, had, had big influence in the country. I had an idea of music across the centuries, so we'd have a concert where they'd have music from different time periods. There was the idea of a cemetery tour, but we know we're going to need a lot of help. And many volunteers. So I say to all of you, and I say to you who may be watching this, if you are interested in history, please join us. Let us know that you'd like to get involved. I think we can make this really special in the Town of Champlain. I don't know if the board has any ideas of events or activities or ongoing things that we could do in twenty twenty-six on this celebration. You know, we could have reenactments, we could help. People often tell me about the block parties that used to take place, maybe we could have a block party.
Add stuff to us.
Yeah. Could, could we have a block party in, in a theme, a dress theme?
They might have a reenactment on River Street one time.
They might have, yeah.
One of the battles.
Well, start thinking of ideas, get your creative juices going, and let's think of some really fun, cool things. Thank you. Constellation Energy Supply Contract. Lonina, do you wanna tell us about this?
No.
I think she, I think she rolled her eyes at me, but-
I've heard Dan and Mary from Constellation for quite some time. Um, we've reached out to find out if this is the best price. Apparently Constellation is good for us to stay with, unfortunately, prices are going up. We have different year, we could go one year, a year and a half, two years. It seems like our best bet is to go with, like, two years, because, I mean, it's gonna go up from point zero six, two cents to point zero seven eight cents. Which is gonna cost about ten thousand dollars more in electricity a year. Unfortunately, there's nothing-
Just to be clear, I understand, this is re-upping, so we can basically lock in the same rate that we have now?
No, no, right now we're paying point six, point zero six two cents per kilowatt.
Okay.
Our contract is up in November.
Okay.
So these are the new prices going forward, because everything is going up. I did receive an email the other day with the prices, and it said that, um, the price change, we could save another three hundred and fifty dollars a year, which isn't a lot, but-
So are you recommending the, the twenty-four month? Which one are you recommending?
The twenty-four month.
The twenty-four month, the point zero seven eight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, prices don't go down, they just keep going up.
Yeah.
And it seems like the delivery charges are more than your kilowatt charges.
I know.
Mm-hmm.
What's the board think?
Well, I think it might be who was to go in with the lock-in at the two-year rate.
I agree.
Yeah, I think. I don't see prices of energy just going down in the next two, five, ten, fifteen, a hundred years.
Ever. Alright, well, do you, do you wanna make a motion to that effect, Joe?
Sure. Then we go with a two-year rate for Constellation.
Wait, so suddenly they'll fight?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Alright, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll reach out to Daniel tomorrow regarding that.
Thank you. Wow, that annual increases.
Mm-hmm. And you think that we just increase how much this year, you know?
I know.
Already.
That already, already, yeah. Alright, well, thank you for getting this and being proactive. Old Business, the .gov website. As I said earlier, um, Mary and I spoke to Aaron Benner from Laura Benner about our website. We already have the .gov domain, correct, Mary?
Yes.
Yeah. So we talked to Aaron about, um, he had looked over what we have currently, and, um, it's, it's a little old-fashioned now, it's time to upgrade it, I guess. So he said he would send us a quote, and I think you all have it. It's, it's pretty substantial, develop a site map, get all the content from us, and write in anything that's missing. He's aware of what's supposed to be included in these .gov websites. And so he'd also create a design that is, is really nice to look at. And he'd include a content management system, so that we would be able to perform the edits, we wouldn't have to call and ask them to do it. And he also would include a, a photo shoot of the village highlights, so he would send someone here, and some of it was probably drawn, and some of it would be regular pictures. Uh, and then gave us a quote of seven hundred and twenty a year. So I'd like to hear what you think about it.
I think it needs to be updated, so it's a great idea, go with some local.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree, I think it needs, our website does need a lot of work.
Yeah, the town's done a great job of theirs, so.
Yeah, and that's the same, and it's the same group, the town, the town website is, it's outstanding. And that's the same group that designed that.
I don't know if you wanna mention that one.
Yeah, I will. So we need to make a decision on this.
I, I say yes, one hundred percent.
You wanna make that motion?
Motion, absolutely. I'll, I'll motion to pay Laura Bennett for the services, um, for updating the website.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Alright, any other, any other discussion, anything you want Mary and I to tell Aaron next time we talk to him?
Thank you.
You'd like to, like, see on it?
Yeah.
And what we have now.
Something that you, in particular, wanna make sure is included, or even, even photographed, or what's gonna make the village website, like, stand out?
If we could, I mean, if we could integrate somehow our billing system through there, and we can get people to sign up for stuff online, and also do like a, a calling, like directory or some sort of like registry or whatever, we can, I don't know how that information would be stored, but then, you know, we could kind of maybe do multiple things at once, if we can get, you know, if we're talking about doing the, the auto phone call system to like send out alerts and stuff, we could do, we could just have people create an account, where they have an email, their phone number, and then it's just in the system. I don't know how you would be able to do that, but if you could, and then, and I mean, Mary would probably know the best, most useful information of like, what do you need to be able to get in touch with people, like email, phone number.
Yeah, she'd have all that, all the boards', at least their email. Board name, board members' names and emails to contact them. And then we were talking about doing got .gov emails.
Yes.
Right, to go along with the .gov website.
Yeah, I think we should have .gov emails. I think they're just safer. They're trusted. Yeah.
I think that Layer Eight would be doing that.
Yes.
If we, I'm, I'm not sure how they do the .gov. I'm sure they would.
Yeah.
I would say with it.
Yeah, they know how to do that, yeah.
Like, Joel, that's a good idea, I don't know if they have an email system to send out alerts, I see what you're talking about. Like, if we had a database of people. If they had something that we needed to share with all of people. It may not be everybody, but it's, that's something to ask them if they, there's a portal for something like that.
Would we be able to put our code on there too, because it seems like everybody's always asking?
Yes.
Can we add that on line?
Yes, our code would go on there, um, any kind of, any kind of announcements, you know, public hearings, the, the drafts of local laws, like, everything would be accessible.
Agendas?
Agendas.
Should be on the minutes?
Yeah.
They should be on there. We do minutes, we don't put agendas on there.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think having a page that has links to local organizations.
Yeah.
Would be nice. JCO, or even Senior Housing, people are always asking, making donations, how to contact them. The libraries, and like the Kewalas Club, and it's Columbus.
Yeah.
I think it would be nice to have some kind of community page, maybe with links.
Hmm? Good idea.
And have the towns number on there.
Mm-hmm, yeah, connected to the town.
Okay, those are all great ideas. Anything else?
Yeah, what about like ribbons, or like, I guess I'm not, that's maybe a little bit extra, but you could put stuff on for Mike, for example, like, you know, brush cleanup, you know, little things like that, brush cleanup, or don't park your car in the roads for winter.
Oh, no, it's, it's good.
Where if you had some sort of like fan, it kind of just ran, like, you know?
Or like a scroll?
Yeah, like you're on the, you know, you're on the news, and it's just-
Yeah, that scroll.
You could do the fire, fire burning, uh, van, all those like little time, time window things, and you just put them there just in case people want. Cause I bet if you put that out there, people wouldn't even know that there's a fire van, most of the time, they would probably-
Oh, yeah.
If you had that out there, they'd be like, I didn't even know it was a fire van.
Yeah.
You know, pay the, the fee to deal with that.
Right. Okay, those are great ideas. Well, we'll call Aaron maybe tomorrow.
Yeah, he was looking for a list of things that we wanted to have on it as well, and we talked to him, and he's, and I can, I can go through what I have from Nikon, they have a list.
Yeah, I just think what is needed.
It's maybe to have space.
Yeah.
Somewhere on that website.
Yeah, Nikon had a good, a good list of that. Alright, um, let's see, we did the standard workday purchase-
Are we gonna do an approval?
Oh, didn't, wait.
We did, we did-
Oh, we, oh, we have the motion.
We have motion.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I lost track, we didn't vote. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any? Those? Motion carries.
I will call vote, cause there's only one?
No, we didn't send one yet.
Okay. Alright, so purchase of the fire station. I will explain, I have contacted our lawyer, um, probably twice by email and four or five phone calls, to talk to him about options for that fire station, whether the village, um, could consider leasing it, or renting it, or purchasing, or anything, because I just don't know how it works between two different agencies. And I haven't heard a thing. I talked to Chris Trombley from the Fire Department today, and he hasn't heard anything either. So there's a fair amount of frustration here. But I did tell Chris that I would like to hear from the board what you think we should consider if it's allowed. So the floor is yours. Not to put any pressure on you.
I mean-
It is very usable storage space for us for things that are currently outdoors.
Yes, that's what I was gonna say.
Okay.
I think it's, it's a unique investment for this village, because I think we're probably one of the only groups of people around that could actually utilize it for what it was built for. Seems like a win-win, because again, we have all those expensive vehicles that are sitting outside essentially just weathering. As far as I- As far as like how you would go about a deal, I mean, I think like some sort of, um, ownership or like path to ownership, or some sort of like lease to buy sort of situation, I, that would be up to someone else who has far more maturity and knowledge than I do, but I think owning the land would be helpful because we never know what we might need someday down the road. It's a good area, in that area, I mean, I think of like the growth of the village where, could it grow the most, it would be around that east side along that, what's that, where?
Elm Street.
Elm Street.
Yeah.
Maybe one day by the grace of anything, the, the old school will become something. Be housing, be anything other than fallout shelter.
Let me say that it, it has been purchased, it has been purchased with a plan. It's, it's when the plan would take effect.
And that recently is purchased development, or has it been repurchased?
Well, recent, this, this year.
It's been recently purchased.
The, from.
The school?
It's February, I think.
Yeah, February, right, because it went, because it went to zoning and it.
Right.
Yeah. And they were in the process of purchasing it then.
And it's been sold.
Oh, I thought it was purchased when they came to.
No, it's been purchased.
It's been purchased, it was listed, I think I saw it listed in.
But nothing's happened to it.
No. Correct.
So, what's the plan?
Uh, there's, there's been someone buying it now there.
Yeah, I saw a van there yesterday.
There's been a van or truck there, it's been a few times or somewhere.
It was a, a, someone who was going to, is going to try to do, I think it was three small businesses connected. That's, that's the idea. Um, they're out of Montreal.
Right.
Juanita, can, what options do you see financially? I mean, if we were to purchase it, it would have to take out a loan.
Oh, definitely.
We don't have.
Can we bond that?
We can bond that, right?
I don't know, we could find out.
And we haven't received any kind of price for the water.
No, no, we have not received a price, but I.
I mean, we need to know that before we consider anything.
Yeah.
Is that something a, a grant, or some kind of?
Kind of a grant?
Could help, ever?
Maybe.
I think that's where Tom Renee could help in something like that, is, would, would that increase your chance of getting a, a grant if it's between two municipal entities?
Public entities. Yeah. If we had a lease, like, you think we could find the money to pay a lease?
There again, you need to consider your taxpayers.
I know.
And, um, if you're going to get a bond, it's depending on how much it is, it's going to be at least fifteen or thirty years.
Interest rate.
Interest rates. There's different factors.
And you got to realize, you're just not going to go in there and use it, there's going to need some work to be done on it.
Well, some, but, I mean, when Mike went in and did all the measurements and was working with Stan, I think his name is, it, it looked like the, the big bays look very usable for our, most of our big equipment, I don't know that that would mean anything. If we're going to turn the office space into something more.
Sure, I was going to consider the heating costs. It's a big building, it's going to cost.
Yeah.
You get, you just got to consider all those factors.
Oh, I know, that's, and that's what I want to hear. So, consider utilities.
I, I guess, yeah, yeah, Mike checks that, I guess we would need if, if, if it was a lease, what is it going to cost? Yeah.
With, with the inner and outer there.
Mm-hmm.
Our one bond that we have through, and our general is going to be paid.
I know. Yeah. What else, any other ideas?
I know we could use the space, there's no, no doubt about it.
Yeah.
We just need to know the overhead cost.
Yeah.
To do it.
And it would, would it be a future move all offices over there? And close this one?
Potential, I, I mean, we haven't really talked about that, but.
Right, you'd have to add on if you undo something like that.
Yeah, so.
I mean, they have, they got a lot of land in that.
They have a big boardroom.
Yes, yes, that they do.
Turn out the boxes or just have maintenance over there.
It does, isn't there a stretch that, that, some, what's that, something like a property going north down that, that field?
Goes all the way back.
Goes by rats.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, it seems extremely useful and could be used, I think it, like John said, it's, it's just the money, it's priced what, what's going to give us.
Yeah, it's, it's just. Yeah, it's really the, the money. So, how do you want me to proceed, just keep calling? Mr. Renee?
So, could you explain the, the, the process of who's in contact with each other to be able to, because we asked for a price, did we ask for a price? I don't even know, what could you?
Yeah, well, we haven't actually, I don't think we've actually asked for a price, I, I, they, they want to work with us. That's the answer I get, and I had been very positive that we want to work with you.
But no figures.
What?
But no figures.
But no figures.
So, I guess we just say we want to work with you then?
Well, do you want me to write, do you want me to write a letter to the Fire District and just say that, that, that there is some interest, but we feel we need more details on the financial aspects?
Uh, yeah, I would say there's significant interest, it's, can we afford to do it, I mean, I think we just describe our budget plan of how we try and spend only when we need to, or we find something with such value that it would be foolish to pass up, and this seems like a ladder type situation, at least in my opinion. And how can we get a deal that we both benefit from?
Are you all okay with me writing this letter phrase, do you want to see it before I send it? It's fine, it'll be emailed to you.
Sure.
Okay. It might not be until next week.
I'll blame you. You enjoy the rest of the week.
I think about it.
I will. I don't think my camper allows me to do this. Anything else on, on this topic? Anything else, have I missed anything?
Are you just going to mention?
Oh, yeah, this one, this one, yes, I knew there was something else. Um, there's a ribbon cutting ceremony for the Town of Champlain's newly installed state-of-the-art art outdoor fitness court, located at the Bob Vin Community Park. This is going to be, uh, on August twenty-first at ten a.m. So, if you can come, please come. They've just made huge progress on this park, it's really coming together. I, I give them congratulations on that, and also ask you to, if you can go, please go and be supportive, because this is to the benefit of all of us for sure. So, August twenty-first at ten a.m. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
How about a second?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
I bet nobody's supporting. Motion carries. Oh, shoot. I have to reopen, Mary forgot about that.
Okay, it's on.
Okay, so I'm going to reopen the meeting thirty seconds later. We had the public hearing for the Knox blocks. However, um, we, in talking to Chris Metot today, the code enforcement officer, uh, he brought up the fact that there were, um, no fines attached. So, we are recommending, he is recommending that we go with the, uh, the fines that are already in our code under fire. And that is, um, two hundred dollars per day of violation. So, that section need, needs to be added to our local law. And by doing this, we're going to have to set another public hearing, so the public can weigh in on this. Mary did take this out, thank you very much.
Yeah, I thought they should have a copy of it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so it's section six, any existing commercial structures subject to this ordinance that have not complied with its provisions within one year from the effective date shall be punishable by a fine of not more than two hundred dollars per day of violation or imprisonment not exceeding fifteen days or more. Can I have a, can I have a motion to add this section to this?
Sure.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we'll have a public hearing, we'll schedule a public hearing at our next board meeting. Which is September eighth. And then let's do it at six forty again, is that okay? Okay. Everyone fine with that?
Yes.
All right. Now, may I have another motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everyone. I knew there was something.